Dear Lord, as we gather here this evening, we just ask your blessings not only on this community, but our state and our country. Lord, we just ask you to look over all our public servants, from those who work in utilities, the police and the fire department. Bring their, back to their families, safe and home every evening. Lord, we just ask that also that you look down on this council and give us the wisdom and the knowledge and help us make the decisions best for this community. We ask this in our Savior's name, Jesus Christ, Father, Son, and Son of God.
Amen. I will call the order, send Bill Down Council Meeting for March 11th, 2025. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Here.
Gary Holbert.
Here.
Dan Wondersen.
Here. Has everyone gone over the minutes for February the 11th, 2025?
Mr. President.
Of the period.
I'll make a motion to pass that.
That should be.
That's a second one.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Here.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. Has everyone gone over the minutes for February the 11th, 2025 council meeting? Are there any additions or corrections? I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion so made.
I have a motion by Jack, second by Gary. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. Has everyone gone over the minutes for February 25th, 2025 work session? Are there any additions or corrections to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So made.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. Has everyone gone over the claims? Are there any questions on those? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the claims.
So made.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. Need a motion to approve the billing adjustments?
Okay, so made.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. Motion to approve the allowance report?
So made.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. Main Street. I guess, Police Department.
Everybody's received my report, hope. Passed my permits here for some reason, I don't know. I think they're expecting me to make an announcement, so.
We know you are.
Yeah, I think I should just come out.
It's denied.
I will, uh, plan on retiring. May 30th will be my last day. So, already got arrangements, everything made for that. By that time, I'll have 32 years in here with the Police Department. I started out as a reserve officer in June of 93, and I kinda thought, you know, first of June of 2025 is a good time to go. So, um, I really appreciate all the support and my guys' support. I'm gonna miss them. Kinda missed doing this job a little bit, but things have changed to the point that it's just time for me to go. And I always make that promise to myself, didn't I Gerald? That I would know when it's time to go and don't want to, uh, I've got more life to live and things to do away from here, so that's what my intention is to do. And with that, I would, I'd know it's up to the council as to who my replacement would be, but I think all of you know that I've been working really hard with Josh and trying to get him, he's actually learned quite a bit of, uh, things that I do. He's the only one in the department that really is, uh, able to take over where I'm at, and I'd like to recommend that he would be my replacement.
He'd be influenced by Gerald too much.
But, in speaking with the guys in the department, I think that Josh would have hit, uh, their support as well on that. But once again, I know it's up to the council to make that decision, but I just wanna put in my two cents, whatever it's worth.
It's not worth anything now, cause you quit.
Too late, the wheels are off.
I told him long time ago, cause he was actually the first visual business that I did when I came on, the council was hiring him, and he had to stay as long as I was here, and he's not gonna do it.
Consultations free for up to, what, three years?
Why?
Well, we wish you well.
Always be around.
We wish you well.
Thank you.
Done a lot for this community, and we sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
None, at least far from the know of. Our new truck should be on the street hopefully before too long. We finally started receiving consoles and gun racks and all the stuff that we need. We're still lacking, unless I heard any different.
They've been shipped.
Running board lights to put on.
Aren't they gonna be, uh, the cover back on the backside with the slide out beds like the old ones?
Yeah, we, we went with the same system that we put in Dylan's truck. It's called DEP, and it's actually weatherproof. It shuts, it's got doors that slide all the way out, and you can actually put stuff on top if you need. And then we, uh, went with, uh, a cheaper tunnel cover to go on top of that. So, that's what we plan on doing the next tunnel.
Worked out really well?
Yeah.
Good deal.
But this should be on the street hopefully here within the next month, that's what it's set.
Anything else on the Police Department? How many?
Nothing.
Uh, the other item, we have one here, Sunset Estates, they are, Aaron is applying for a grant to possibly put infrastructure in, to do a, open up a section, do a project. And he needs to go in with that grant, he needs a letter just from the council stating that, you know, we are for, you know, him going into that grant and possibly opening up a section in the Sunset Estates. So, I would ask, you know, that you let me draft that letter and sign it, uh, to go in with their application. That application goes in, has to be in by Monday.
How many billings are we talking?
Not sure yet, cause this is put infrastructure, and, well, everything is predicated if they get that or not, so.
We don't have a plan?
Well, he's gotta, he has to go and plan it.
Have to be in a planning commission, and they would have to recommend that back to the council.
But this is just, we're basically telling people that's granting us money for infrastructure that the town is for.
But yes, it has to follow legal procedures, the planning commission. Sure, but I would think we'd have some kinda initial idea of what we're doing.
Well, I can't speak for, for them, you know, on that, that side of the coin. This was just to get the money for infrastructure, period. It's not.
I understand.
Now, does that affect any other grants, do you?
Not for us, that's it.
That's all the money?
That's all on here. That's something that came up, uh, that they got an opportunity to, and open up, you know, part of that.
Uh, Dan, I would make a motion that you draft up a letter and that, that the following council members can approve that, and we can, and move forward, and then he can move forward, the planning commission, depending on what he wants to do. And then we're legally advised and have anything that we need to know, so.
Yeah. Gary seconds. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried.
We got a few items we need to take care of this evening. We need to reappoint our members for the planning commission and the boards of appeals. Your names are on your list there, right?
Okay.
It's broken down on how they have to be approved. So many by the president, so many by the council, and then the county commissioners have already approved theirs, so.
The president has four appointees, and so my appointees would be Greg White for a term ending March 11th, 2028, Mike Duke, and his term would end March 11th, 2029, and Kathleen Horwath, her term would end March 11th, 2029.
That's kind of.
Catherine, and Kevin Sparks, his would be March 11th, 2029, and I would entertain a motion to approve those by me.
So made.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. I need a motion, uh, the town council as a whole has three appointees, and what's down is Jack Pottker, uh, and his term would be till December 31st, 2027. Kevin Slick, his term would be through March 11th, 2029, and Ed Hubols, and his would end March 11th, 2029. I would entertain a motion to accept those.
So made.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
So.
I have a second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. And along with that is the BCA Board of Zoning Appeals, and the president and council appoints the following. Greg White, uh, and his term would end March 11th, 2028. Marilyn Hubols, and her term would end March 11th, 2026, and Josh Hinshaw.
Jason.
Jason Hinshaw, and his term would end March 11th, 2027, and I would entertain a motion to accept those appointments.
Dan, you missed Marvin Ashen.
Not yet. Okay, I do differ. This is my appointees.
So.
I got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. And Marvin Ashen, uh, his appointment is by the council and from the planning commission, and his term would end March 11th, 2029. I would entertain a motion to accept that appointment.
So made.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried. Our twenty days.
So, I don't need to listen to me anymore. Uh, I've got a couple different things. Um, we are looking at doing the auction on May 2nd. I talked to you guys about one of the other meetings. I came into the city building, talked to the girls up front, and that day is clear. Um, I believe you have a flyer in front of you, we're gonna start at 4:00 PM at Park. So, I just wanted to make sure that you're still getting through with that. Since that day is clear, I believe you said to come back once we got the date.
You're talking about the old city building?
No, down at Park.
Down at Park, okay.
Yes, yep.
He said he talked, he was to make sure that Park was available.
Yep, May 2nd?
May 2nd, 4:00 PM.
Kevin, do you need a comment?
I'm good with it.
Ed, if you're not going, I'll make a second.
Make a second till Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you have any problem?
Nope.
Do you want to do it?
Okay, I would entertain a motion on that request.
Motion so made.
Have a motion to accept that. I have a second.
Okay.
Gary said okay.
I told you, then I'm, Gary said okay.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried.
Gary, I've got a couple more things for you. Sorry. Um, so, some of you may know, may not know. We had, Fire Department got a call down to the park today, uh, for a wire stand. Well, it turns out that it was the speaker wires for the festival that apparently a kid hit it with a football, and it was like, they said it was like a domino effect, and then it just all started to pop. So, the wire we have is a directed area. I talked to Gerald earlier, and I'd like to see about burying it and getting it from overhead to underground. I don't know if that's an issue or not.
I seen you turn my head real quick, didn't you there Kevin?
That costs money. That might be one issue.
So, what I wanna do is, I wanna, like, I wanna, like, we wanna do it. Like, we just need you guys to put it up on the pole because, you know, the speakers are so close to the power lines. Be able to leave you enough sitting on the ground and then have the guys to sort of make the.
We might be able to make that happen before our twenty.
That's underground cable.
What we have is, yes, it was, it's Ubi-protected, you know, we're underground, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's got, make sure it matches the code, right? Is there a code?
Well, there's a difference.
I mean, there's no foliage, so it's not a.
It's similar to cable TV wires, I think, all those line individually. There's one that's coded as long as I can.
So, are we good to move forward with that, or?
Well, you'll, you'll have to, you'll give.
Right, coordinate with Kevin.
Other Kevin.
Okay.
And make sure, whatever you do there, you do, you know, so that, so that doesn't have an issue later.
Right.
Dan, I'll make a motion that as long as our twenty days committee gets with Kevin and Mr. Schlup can help them coordinate getting the wire up to the top of the pole for where you bury it.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I know, second if Kevin puts that in his maps of that, that wire being around, cause you're not gonna put a Trisha wire in there, right?
No, I'm gonna put in Tom, dude.
Okay.
Just be safe. I'd rather do that, you know, cause that's a real easy replace versus redoing all the wires.
Sure. Sounds good. I made that second.
Yeah, we call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion, Gary.
Okay. Problem. I want you more things. Uh, we wanna do something special for Dennis now during the festival. Um, we are, I'm thinking about getting some kind of plaque made or something. I actually acquired a fire hydrant, but I don't know if that'll work or not, but I wanna be able to put it like on one side of the stage or the other after we get done. You know, I will, I don't exactly know what we're doing yet, but.
In the flower area?
Yeah, somewhere in the flower area. You know, it'll look real nice while I'm standing there for it. You know, I just, we just thought he's done so much for the community, you know.
That'd look good on Stone, Mount Stone.
Something similar to what they have out by the PD that.
I would do that.
Why is everybody looking at me?
You don't have any issue.
I'm happy.
Not as long as they pull the wings around it.
Would we bury Dennis right in the wings?
Yeah.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. Uh, would like him to come back and tell us exactly what it is, maybe some kind of drawing or something, but I'll make the motion, make it move forward and make some kind of recognition for Dennis Spears.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Gary. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried.
The last thing is, is we're still working on getting a price together for the event fans in the bathroom. We think we found something, but we're gonna, I'm gonna get somebody in that I can actually, you know, professionally do it.
Make sure we get with Kevin.
Well, that's what, I mean, we'll come back to you guys before.
You can run a pipe straight from that, right across Morton.
Yep.
To a guy's house.
Yep, I agree.
My house is a courtroom.
That's all I got.
I would like it very good that.
You were done bound to have a holiday, but you did. Gary, turn height of six inches.
Height of six, okay. So, we had a water issue, uh, back in December, is that correct?
February.
Uh, February. And the resident that lived there was in the hospital and didn't know it was leaking, and they ran, uh, nine thousand?
Uh, ninety-four thousand gallons.
Ninety-four thousand gallons of water in the basement. But, for some reason, uh, it's gotten repaired, and, um, we didn't get a chance to go down and inspect this. Uh, so it is without, without.
Verification.
Yes. And the, the one thing I wanna stress is, when this, we certainly don't wanna charge anybody for anything that they don't get. However, if you do run into this kinda issue, it's almost a have-to situation where we have to know what's come home. So, all they have to do is, if it does happen to them, call down here to the city building and speak with Kevin, the town manager, and see if we can get down there to investigate a little bit what's going. Cause I don't, I don't know if this went down the drain. Uh, they're looking at nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
It's like three cents.
Seventy-two cents for, uh, and I, I can't count for that water. So, at this point, I think the fair thing to do is to table this until we can get a repair bill from where we repaired it. Um, maybe one of the guys go down and inspect where a repair was made, make sure it didn't go down the drain, cause I certainly don't want all the rest of the, of the town's residents to pay for a, for a system that it did go down and got treated down to plants. So, um, I'm not saying I wouldn't, okay, but I do wanna table it for the next meeting and let Kevin go down and sit in there or something, get something. My hands are tied, I gotta have something.
Yeah, because if this water went through sewer, tricked a plant, it was treated, and that's a cost that we just can't, you know, let go. So, that's why we check, make sure that that stuff didn't go through the sewer, then we can adjust the sewer bill, cause that sewer bill's predicated on the water.
And we wanna be fair with everybody. So, I made that motion to go to work session.
We'll just put it on the work.
Okay.
Put it on there. Street Department?
Um, we've set those to proceed to DC paving on our community crossings, and I'm waiting to hear back from them so we can schedule a pre-con meeting and get the ball rolling on that. We've been busy the past few weeks filling in potlows throughout town. You know it is a season now. That's basically all I got on the street.
Who wants to go first?
You want me to go first?
Sure. Um, so for the month of February, we were dispatched to sixty-four runs, just a few shy of what we had for January. I think seventy-one or seventy-two. Forty-five of those runs in February were medical, fourteen were fire-related, and five of them fell into our other category. Um, I need permission from the council to accept an application for a resident that lives just outside a response area, uh, wants to come on as a reserve, already certified in firefighter one and two, EMT, hazmat, uh, awareness and operations. Um, recently resigned from RFD, uh, but would be a great addition to us. He's looking to move into the area, but wanted to come on as a reserve first to kinda fill out the ropes and stuff before he buys a house and, and moves into a full-time status. Um, his first name is Adede Kumbo, I'm not gonna try to pronounce his last name, fantastic guy. Um, he came down and, and helped when we did the benefit for Chief Spears, uh, was willing to do anything and everything we asked of him. Um, so I just, I need a approval to accept his application so we can move forward with the.
Can I ask where his current residence is?
Uh, I'm gonna say Kinsey Street, Kinsey Street in Richmond. Just off my list.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I would write that request and motion.
Okay. Okay, a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Jack. We call the roll, please.
Jack Pottker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, the only other thing I have is, who's responsible for the fire pit that's in the park?
Fire department?
Nope. I don't know if it's one guy, I don't know if it's the one guy left out there from Christmas in Centerville or.
Closest scouts from under the park?
I just, I read, I seen it. I wanna see it move out of the park, that way nobody starts firing and it gets hurt.
Will.
Will?
Will.
Okay.
It was like.
I know that the, the boy scouts did the fitting or whatever during Christmas in Centerville, but I don't want the public to see that as, you know.
Think that's no invitation to start firing down.
Right. And I don't want anybody to get hurt, so I will, will.
Water.
Okay. I'll get his phone number and contact.
Okay.
What if I work from here?
You want it?
That's all I have. Thank you.
You're up, Ken? I'm up. Well, yeah, all the veins have been put in, they're down to do the services now. We have one filter that's been cleaned, repressurized. It'll be going back into service shortly, next week. We'll start on filter two. You did clean down. Done. Um, we had a little problem with iron in the system last week. We're still investigating the cause for that. There were several possible causes. We're just trying to pin it down to do our best to prevent that from happening again.
It's all clear right now.
To the best of my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints of murky water.
Good.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Question for Kevin. Um, on the north station there, the rice station, the water pumps up, is there anything we need to do? Why we have less use due to no rest park?
Um, it's probably been a month, month and a half ago. We are downsizing number five pump, taking some pressure off. As it stands now, one and two is the only ones we can run, and they'll be running full-time until the rest area is completed. We're gonna pull our big pump, which, we're gonna put it on the shelf, but until we have growth up there, that pump, if we do run it, we have to open fire hydrants along the way with those systems. So, I'm just gonna pull it out and put it on the shelf, put another smaller pump in its place so we can rotate one and two and three for it. And we, once the rest area opens back up, there should be no problem with them supplying them the water with that rotation. I'll set it up, and it'll help save the lives of our pumps, because we're due to replace two of them this year, so.
Looking ahead to it. You're looking ahead to the game, so when that two-year period's over, we're setting a good situation.
Yeah. This way we can break up the rotation on pump placement as well. And like I said, if we get growth, we got the pump on the shelf, we can throw it back in and go to the. Like I said, if we get growth, we got the pump on the shelf, we can throw it back in and go to the bay. For now, it's just a waste of pump.
Is that project on course?
To the best of my knowledge.
That's true. It looks like they're moving pretty quick.
Uh they've had a lot of questions.
Tear stuff down, they are.
It's gone. I need to see that wood's gone, but they need to remove.
I believe that's all the water under the water.
Waste, waste water, stormwater?
Well, I, I got an agreement here from Lock Mueller for the work they're doing on Beans Road List Station for the work up to date. And I would like council to give Dan permission to sign off on the agreement.
The certain stated money for that?
Uh that would be eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
And that's enough to exceed?
And I'll take care of everything they've done for us to this point. Now we're going to have to get them a contract with them again to do the checks on the system and explore again because I would rather have our team do the inspection, review the plans and it will also help us work out a maintenance agreement with them, uh considering we've been donating maintenance for several years.
You got any questions, Carol? I have a painting motion on paying that bill.
Uh I'll make the motion that we allow uh the president, Dan Wondersen, sign off on that for Lock Mueller.
Can't let him sign off.
That's what he said, he said, did you say yourself or did you say?
No, Dan, he said he'd sign off.
So don't be passing the buck on everybody.
You're getting ready to up the water.
So I'll, I'll stand with my motion to Nathan. Do I have a second?
Sorry, second.
We call the role, please?
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion, Carrie.
Uh we did host the Whitewater Valley Regional Planning Group meeting here. Um this was the first meeting that we ever opened up the facilities for tours. Uh we did open up the wastewater facility for anyone who wanted to go in after we needed a tour. I couldn't have let them in the water plant due to the filters being replaced at the time. We set precedent and had a very large turnout actually for the meeting.
Oh, we do it again.
Yeah, even Gary showed up.
He might have.
Was there food there, Gary?
No. Well, now, there was coke and shrooms.
Okay.
And shrimp.
That's all I have other wastewater and water.
Electric?
I'm still waiting to hear from D O E R grant. Hopefully we'll get some news then and get started on the 4K converter. Uh we had two power outages last month, both around long related. Empa's still replacing poles on schedule. That's basically all I got.
I will pay under electric, uh you know, President Trump was putting a twenty-five percent, you know, tariff on Canadian, the Canadian side coming in here. Uh just to let you know, we we have, uh let me find that percentage here of what they actually supply. They typically are only producing about uh that we get into in uh five percent to fourteen percent of the electricity that we use. Because everything is on it, on the grid and there's, it's partitioned off in like three sections where the like center section.
MISOs in the center.
Yeah, MISO and all of it. So there, it's not a great lot, but it could affect us uh if they let, the, which he's working on, you know, fire up some of the plants that's been kind of toned down and shut down. Uh if we won't see, you know, anything from that.
Will you hear anything from uh your commissioners meeting with Empa this next month or two? Get an idea, pass along the other four members. I know he goes over, he goes over, but I don't have a chance.
There's no order tomorrow.
Oh sure, yeah, I'm sure. I can, you'll send me some pictures and some good footage.
I'll send you some.
Okay.
We're going tomorrow.
You can go on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I can install some of the equipment that I have to learn about tomorrow and be over there and eat lunch and stuff.
Yeah, but yeah, if I get more information on that earlier, but I did want to pass along that, you know, it's not going to be a huge impact, but, you know, it could affect us a little bit. Anything else I have to say? Nope. Clerk, got anything?
No.
Let me make these announcements, the work session will be March 25th, 2025 at 7:00 P.M. here in the council room. There will be a planning commission meeting on March 27th, 2025 at 7:00 P.M. here in the council room. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this council meeting to March 11th, 2025.
Motion so made.
And a motion by that, do I have a second?
Second.
I thought maybe you wanted to stay.
No.
Second by Jack, will you call the role, please?
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wondersen.
Aye. Motion, Carrie, and we thank you.